The flight was amazing. It's a miracle.
So next time she call.
Hi. So.
Are we good?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight is Monday. It's the 24th of April and you are here to participate either in person or online for our H I B Town Hall meeting. I'm thrilled to welcome you all this evening. My name is Joe Malash and I'm the superintendent here, the Chair of Public School District. We have a full agenda involving a presentation and then about an hour for question and answers to go through and some discussion. So I appreciate you being online and in person. Like to go through and introduce the folks that are sitting up at the front. First. We have a very special guest who is here to present to us this evening, Mr. David Nash Esquire. He is the Legal One Director in the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association. Mr. Nash will be addressing the group both in person, online in a few minutes. And then from our Board of Education, Ms. Miriam Stern, who is our Board of Education President. Mr. Joel Mayer, who's our Board of Education Vice President. This Jennifer Fleischer, who's a member of the Board of Education. Mr. Adam Greenbaum, who's a member of the Board of Education. And then from some of the schools in our district. First, Mr. George Guy, who's the principal of Rosa Middle School. Mr. John Cohen, who's the principal at Woodcrest Elementary School. This is Jennifer Di Stefano, who's the SAC and the Anti-Bullying Specialist at High School East. Ms. Carol Legamba, who's the school counselor and Anti-Bullying Specialist at Woodcrest Elementary School. And Mrs. Look. Excuse me, Mrs. LaCoia Wethington, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Compliance, Equity and Student Services. Also in the room with us this evening is Mrs. Barbara Wilson, who's our Public Information Officer. Mrs. Wilson will serve as our timekeeper this evening as well. And from our Technology Department, the Director of Technology, Mr. Mark Plavinsky, who got all of this set up and is keeping us online. So again, thank you for joining us this evening. I am thrilled to turn it right over to Mr. David Nash. Mr. Nash.
Thank you very much. It's a real pleasure to have a chance to be here with all of you. I can tell you that addressing issues of harassment, intimidation and bullying is something that has taken on tremendous focus across the country. New Jersey has put in place a comprehensive, complex law to address these issues, but I can tell you, having spent a great deal of time working with administrators, parents and others across the state. You do have an incredible team here in Cherry Hill that is doing so much in-depth work on all of these issues. So it's a real pleasure to have a chance to be here with you to talk about this and hopefully to answer some of your questions along the way. Just a quick background on myself, I am currently the Director of the Legal One Program. We provide school law training for teachers, parents, counselors, administrators, everybody involved in our schools. I spent a number of years as legal counsel with the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association. And it feels like a prior life, but I did spend six years on a school board as well, which really was a wonderful opportunity to understand that incredibly important function. So it's great to have board members as part of our panel today. All of you, I believe, will have access to this PowerPoint. I believe it'll be made available on the district website. I have to do this whenever I do any presentation at the very beginning. Technically, as I'm giving a presentation, I'm not providing legal advice. I'm giving you information. Educational information about New Jersey law and hopefully, you know, giving you an opportunity to ask questions to sort of clarify what the law says in different areas. So with that, as questions come up, I will assume particular questions are hypotheticals. Of course, I won't be able to address particular incidents or issues or allegations. But I will try to give you information to help you understand what the procedures are, the law we have in New Jersey, and a few fundamental principles that we want to keep in mind. Again, all of you will have access to this PowerPoint. So I thought it would be useful early on to just give you the definition that the state of New Jersey has put into place regarding harassment, intimidation and bullying. Each of us, if we had our, our way, we would probably write this definition differently. When we hear the word bullying, certain things come to mind. Of course, the New Jersey Legislature decided to put in place, decided to put in place some very specific requirements. So let's walk through those. Under New Jersey law, in order to have something that is considered harassment, intimidation or bullying, we need something that we can specifically point to. It could be gestures, could be something that's written, could be verbal, could be a physical act. Oftentimes, it also can involve electronic communications. It could be a single incident. Oftentimes, if there is an actual bullying case, it will involve multiple acts over time, but it doesn't have to. So even a one-time incident could meet New Jersey's definition. And it could take place anywhere. Certainly could take place on school grounds, at a school function. But even some incidents that occur off school grounds that are not during any sort of a school function could still meet the definition of bullying. So we do need to clarify where and when incidents are occurring, but they don't have to be on school grounds or during a school function. If we could advance the slide. So we need to be able to determine under New Jersey law, what motivated the behavior? And that's not always easy to do. Sometimes one student will target another student. You might have an issue that arises where one student physically harms another student. Obviously, that would be a code of conduct violation. That would be something that we would take very seriously that the school district would address. We can't call it bullying under New Jersey law unless we can determine what motivated that behavior. What was the characteristic? That was reasonably perceived as motivating that behavior. So it could be something like race, religion, disability, sexual orientation. Could be something like the student who is perhaps perceived as being overweight. We've seen cases where it's even some other unusual situations, a student who was vegetarian. It was singled out for being vegetarian, student who came to school and had lice and was singled out for having lice. So there's lots of things that could be that characteristic, but you need a characteristic. And it can't just be something we suspect. We need some evidence to support that that's what drove the incident. So we have to figure out what that characteristic is. The characteristic is just one piece of the definition. We also need to determine whether the incident caused substantial disruption or interference with the rights of students or the orderly operation of the school. So sometimes an issue will occur between two students. One student says something that's not very kind to another student. And the two students laugh and move on and it doesn't cause substantial disruption. If inappropriate language was used and it comes to the attention of school officials, it still has to be addressed. But we wouldn't call it harassment, intimidation or bullying unless it caused substantial disruption. So that's something more than a momentary annoyance. It's something that has a lasting impact on that student. A dramatic form of that would be a student who's afraid to come to school. But it could take more subtle forms. It might be a student who was very outgoing and friendly and because of the emotional harm, the student has withdrawn and is very quiet. It could be that the student is fearful and is changing the way they move around the building because they're so fearful of the other student. So we need something we can point to that shows a lasting impact, some form of substantial disruption. It only has to be for one student, of course. It doesn't have to be for an entire class or school, but we do need to be able to show that. And different issues, the very same issue can have a different impact depending on the student who was targeted. So we need that piece in place. We also have to have at least one of these other three. So New Jersey, again, is really specific in our law. So one thing that you might point to is that this caused physical harm or emotional harm or put the student in fear of harm to themselves or others. Or it could be something that was demeaning to the student or a group that the student is associated with. Or it could be something that created a hostile educational environment. The student can't function well in school because of what occurred for that student. So in order for us to have something that meets New Jersey's definition, at least one of those three has to be present in any particular case. We often investigate issues that come to the attention of school officials and start looking into what might have occurred. And what we discover in many cases is that we may have a conflict instead of bullying. So what's the big difference between a conflict and bullying? Typically bullying is one-sided. One student is being primarily targeted physically, emotionally, in person, online, lots of different ways that could happen. So one student is primarily targeted and one student is primarily the aggressor. Sometimes we have really hurtful things that are being said, but both students are engaging. Both students are participating and saying hurtful things to each other. And it is an issue that has to be taken very seriously. It has to be addressed. In many cases, there need to be consequences, but it wouldn't be bullying when it's mutual engagement. So we do have to look at whether the issue is primarily one-sided, not 100%, but primarily one student being the target and one student being the aggressor in order to meet New Jersey's definition. Now, when you think about this and try to unpack it, there's a few pieces that we need to try to put into place. So one big part of the definition in New Jersey is whether or not the issue caused substantial disruption. That's more than a mere annoyance, something that bothers you for that moment and then you're over it two minutes later. It's something that's causing lasting harm. The bullying investigation itself might feel like substantial disruption and it might take a lot of time. Some of these investigations take a while. But that's not substantial disruption under New Jersey law. So the fact that it took time to investigate doesn't meet the criteria for bullying. You need to look at some lasting impact and it could be a change in the student's baseline behavior. The student who was very outgoing is now very quiet. Could be that the student is experiencing heightened emotions compared to what they normally would be dealing with. Student is getting very agitated or upset or shutting down. Could be that the student is changing their routine in school. So we need to ask those questions and look at the impact on that particular student. And we want to talk to the student who may have been the victim of bullying. We do know that sometimes the student who may have been the victim could be downplaying what happened. So we also, in many cases, want to talk to a school counselor, talk to a teacher, talk to perhaps a coach or administrator who knows that student well, just to get some additional insight to figure out whether we really are seeing that substantial disruption. So in addition to the substantial disruption piece, we have to figure out is this a student who perhaps is more resilient? We've learned from some interesting cases that we have some terrible behavior that occurs that has to be addressed, but it might not be bullying depending on the impact that it's having on a particular student. So this is just one example of a case from the Reddington School District. In this case, you had a student who was targeted for being Asian. And on a school spirit day that everybody was asked to come in wearing a school color, which happened to be yellow. Student who was Asian didn't wear that color and very hurtful comments were made to that student. It's something that very easily could have met New Jersey's bullying definition. For that particular student, it didn't cause substantial disruption. It didn't cause a lasting impact. So it was a code of conduct violation. It was terrible behavior. It had to be addressed. But it didn't meet the H I B definition that we have in New Jersey. And that can be frustrating at times. We would all agree to condemn that kind of behavior. Nobody should ever make those sorts of comments to another student. But we have to meet New Jersey's definition to have bullying. So that was an example where the student happened to be a very resilient student. It did not meet New Jersey's H I B definition. We do have to keep in mind when it comes to bullying that sometimes we can have bullying without bad intent. Sometimes students might be not thinking about the impact of what they're saying or doing. What we have to think about under state law is should the student have known that what they're saying or doing can cause harm? Not did they intend the harm? So there was actually an interesting case from another school district, the Montgomery School District, where you had a student who had lost a lot of weight. Her friends were worried about her because she had lost a lot of weight. They reached out to her boyfriend and said, we're worried about our friend. We think maybe she has a problem. Maybe she has an eating disorder. And then they talked to some other people because they were worried about this particular student. Next thing you know, rumors were flying around the school that a particular student might have an eating disorder. Well, these were friends who were trying to help their friend, but they started a rumor that caused tremendous harm for this particular student. And it turned out that it was bullying, even though in this particular case, they weren't trying to cause that harm. By high school, they should have known that doing that, talking about this with other students, rather than going to an adult and asking for help, it was likely to cause more harm. So this is not your typical case, but there are some cases where the student didn't intend the harm and it's still bullying. And we do see that from time to time. There is a very elaborate process that New Jersey said we have to follow. And sometimes it's a frustrating process because as a parent, you want to know what's going on on day one. You want all the information. And we can't provide all of the information that many parents would want immediately. So under New Jersey law, if an incident is reported, it does go to the school principal. If a staff member suspects that a student is being bullied, they are required to report it to the principal that day. If a, if a parent or a student believes that a bullying issue occurred, school officials would like you to report it that day, but there's no mandate. You could report it a day later, a week later, a month later. There's no statute of limitations as long as you're still a student in that school district. But once the school district learns about the incident, the principal initiates the investigation and the principal assigns it to an anti-bullying specialist. Parents are then notified that an investigation has been started. The investigation timeline now kicks in. The investigation has to be completed within 10 school days. So we don't count weekends. We don't count other time off, but just counting school days, typically two weeks, you would need to complete that investigation. And then there's an additional two days for the anti-bullying specialist to write the report. Occasionally you might have a case that extends even longer. Perhaps a student who needed to be interviewed is out sick and can't be interviewed. That would be a case where an interim report would be completed. But you might explain that we're not yet able to reach a conclusion because one of the people we need to talk to isn't available. So the report is completed typically within those 10 school days and then two, two more days for writing the report. Information goes to the superintendent with the outcome of that investigation. It goes to the Board of Education and the board is informed about that outcome. The board doesn't yet vote on anything, but the board is informed of that outcome. Information then goes home to the parent. And the, the parent is made aware that the board was informed that this investigation took place. This was the outcome. The parent can then ask for a hearing. Parent asks for a hearing, the district needs to provide that within 10 days. Whether the parent asked for a hearing or not, at the next board meeting, the board would vote to either affirm, reject or modify the decision that was reached. And as with lots of other issues, of course, parents have a right, if they wish to, to appeal a decision. So a parent could appeal that decision to the commissioner and beyond. So that's the basic investigation process that we have in New Jersey. I'll quickly mention some revisions in the law that folks should be aware of. New Jersey did enact some revisions that went into effect this school year. So there's a new state reporting form that has to be used anytime a school official is an employee in a district suspects there's bullying. That form is also made available for others to use. So parents and students can use that form. You're not mandated to. It's always better if we can use that form so that it's easier to have uniformity and reports and tracking. There is mandated inclusion in the student record. We do need to have a record that there was a confirmed bullying incident for that student. Because New Jersey now says if we get to a third confirmed bullying case where one student was the aggressor, there has to be an individual plan, a student intervention plan for that student. So we do need to track that information. There is heightened scrutiny for what are called preliminary determinations. You might have a case where a kindergartner uses the word bullying and perhaps didn't understand the term as an example. And the principal sits down with the student, talks about the issue, understands that it wasn't really a bullying allegation. Principal can consult with the anti-bullying specialist. If the allegation doesn't meet New Jersey's definition, there is a process for doing a preliminary determination. Even that process, though, requires that parents be informed. So parents are informed if that decision is made, just like they would be informed about an ultimate outcome of an investigation. And all of the rights that a parent would have as far as appeal are there for that as well. So the new law does require information be placed on the district website. There is a guidance document that outlines the rights for parents under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. I will point out that the guidance document was developed by the New Jersey Department of Education and has not been updated. That's not the district's fault. Hopefully that guidance document will be updated soon. It's from 2012. But it does outline the basic rights that all parents would have. There is a new school climate state coordinator position at the Department of Ed to try to help school districts on these issues. So we do give you a link for more information on that as well. We give you a link for the Department of Education policy that they have developed as a model policy for school districts to look at. And some frequently asked questions the Department of Ed put out regarding the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. I do want to point out, this isn't new, but occasionally you might have a bullying case that actually involves a potential crime. So one example might be the crime of cyber harassment. If a student is involved in electronic communications and, for example, threatens serious bodily injury and they do that electronically, that is something that could meet the definition of cyber harassment under state law. And if we have an issue involving cyber harassment, municipal court judges now have some additional tools. They could actually impose a requirement for parents to attend training along with their child. There's actually a provision if we had a case where a parent was actively encouraging the bullying behavior, where another parent could personally sue the parent who was encouraging the bullying behavior. So these are things that are very rare, but they are provisions that are in the law for those extreme circumstances. We do know that there is a strong protection for student confidentiality in this process, and I know that can be frustrating at times. So if we have a specific incident that's being investigated, the school district is not permitted to share personally identifiable information about other students. For example, who might have been witnesses and shared information in that particular case. So that's under state and federal law. The district doesn't have any option to waive that and to start sharing information. Only a parent could waive those confidentiality protections in a particular case. So we do need to understand that when you're asking for information about what happened and perhaps you're not getting all the information you might want about students who witnessed it and who shared information. The school district is prevented from sharing that level of information under state and federal law. Of course, the, the big reason that training like this is so important is to stress that we're all in this together. We want to look at parents and schools as partners. It is critical to share information sooner rather than later. As parents and guardians, you know better than anyone, if there's a change in your child's baseline behavior, you're going to notice it probably before anyone else does. Sharing that information with school officials can help to, in a very early stage, identify students who need support. Students who might be in a situation that could be developing towards bullying, but perhaps hasn't reached that stage yet. So it is also important, of course, to understand your child's social media presence, kind of beyond the scope of my formal presentation. But I give you a link to information from the Cyberbullying Research Center. They've got some wonderful resources to help understand the importance of working with children regarding their social media presence and how they communicate electronically. It is important sometimes, we know, for school officials to act quickly. So sometimes when an issue occurs, the best way to keep everyone safe and to figure out what happened might mean that we need to talk to children within minutes. And that might mean that school officials need to talk with children prior to being able to touch base with a parent on a particular case. The U.S. Supreme Court years ago recognized that, that in order to give school officials the latitude they need to keep everyone safe to effectively investigate issues, that school officials will need the right to speak with children right away regarding particular incidents that might have occurred. So a couple of key points as I wrap up. Once a staff member learns about an alleged incident, they have to report that to the principal and the district has to either do a full investigation or a preliminary determination. Even if we had a case where the student and parent said, please don't do so. If something would meet New Jersey's definition, we have to go through that process. As I mentioned, intent to harm is not required. Even if the behavior involves a student who has a disability and the behavior might be a manifestation, might be caused by that disability. New Jersey says if it meets our definition for H I B, we would still label it as H I B. And I understand that can sometimes cause frustrations because sometimes the behavior is caused by a student's disability. Now, of course, you factor in that issue when we're thinking about what do we do about an incident? But it can't change the definition. School officials are, as I said, are not permitted to share specific information regarding the discipline imposed on other students that again falls under confidentiality protections. So we can't share that level of information. Bottom line, we have lots of issues that are occurring. I know that everyone in the school district is committed to doing everything they can to keep kids safe. Sometimes we're going to learn about issues that don't meet the H I B definition but are still being taken, taken very seriously. We often have code of conduct violations that don't meet the H I B definition or conflicts that don't meet the definition. But lots of steps are being taken to resolve the issue. So it's important that we not get so focused on something having to be H I B that we lose sight of all the productive steps that are taken in many cases that don't meet that technical definition. So that's just a quick overview and with that, I'll turn it back over.
So thank you to Mr. Nash for the presentation. More importantly, though, thank you for, those of you who are here, those of you who are online. We, and, and before, as we transition now into some questions and answers, just a couple of things that are important to all of us and we'd like everyone to keep in mind. We are here because we want to listen, because we want to hear. And as those of you who have been attendants at our action meetings, whether in person or calling in, know that we hear these things fairly often. Doesn't mean we don't need to continue to hear them. We look forward to taking back everything we hear to using that in conjunction with the requirements that we have in the various regulations, both state and federally, and finding opportunities, if there are opportunities to improve processes, opportunities to improve communications, one of which, by the way, we are in. We will not be able tonight likely to answer every question you have. From my perspective, that's okay because that's part of listening. We won't be able to, and, and I would ask you not to address specific issues by name. Certainly, as you, as you know, you will always have the opportunity to raise those individually, either through Dr. Malash or through the schools and the principals, and those will be followed up. So, so we're here to listen. We want to do that. And we hope that that can be productive, not just for us in in our opportunity to improve processes, but also for you to recognize that we value your input and we we look forward to using that. As as partners, as Mr. Nash said, you have to be, we want you to be partners. The board always wants the community to partner with us, not just on issues here tonight, H I B bullying issues, but other issues as well. So we look forward to having that that discussion. Answer them more specifically and we'll move forward. So with that, we'll start with a couple of questions that we've already had. And then what I'll do is I'll just look left and right for those of you who you would like to chime in with with some answers and provide some guidance. We'll do that. And those of you who are here, identify yourselves so that we know that you have a question. You can come up. There's a Mr. Poplinski is that that microphone is is open. So you come up to the to the podium and you can ask those questions and then we'll go from there. So the first first question we have is, why are we told that bullying behaviors are being addressed? But nothing ever happens to the students who are accused of doing the bullying or being bullies? Yeah. So Mr. Nash, you want to handle that one?
Just as a basic point, and then I'm certainly happy to have others jump in on this. Under state and federal law, school officials are not allowed to tell the parent of one child the specifics about what discipline or other responses were put in place for another child. That doesn't mean that things haven't been put in place. Oftentimes there is counseling that is put in place for a student and oftentimes there are restorative justice pieces that are put in place for another student. There are many other options besides suspension for ways that a school district can respond to behavior and they might not think, might not be things that are completely obvious, but they are happening. In every case where there is a confirmed bullying incident, there is some response. But school officials are not permitted to give the specifics on that.
All right. Could you explain why a child who makes, and this comes from from a parent who makes my my child's life miserable is entitled to privacy? Parent also would like to know what is being done to make sure that the behavior, the bullying behavior is is quote unquote stopped for good or addressed?
I can give the the broad answer on this issue. Sometimes we have children who make inappropriate choices and cause real harm to other kids. You can see through the Cherry Hill policies how seriously the district takes those issues and the importance of responding. But we are stuck in this situation under state and federal law where we simply can't go into detail about the steps that were taken. But the school district does want to work very closely if something isn't working. If her, if the bullying behavior continues, the key is for school officials to know that right away. Because there were steps that were put in place, there always are in response to each case. And if something is continuing, school officials need to know that right away so that they can adjust and take other steps to make sure that a child is being protected.
I would just add that H I B is embedded across the two broad categories of our student code of conduct. So H I B violations are approached in the very same way that other violations to the code of conduct are approached. And consequences, you know, in our view should be should be logical and they should be timely. So that being said, we we tend not to wait until the H I B bio, or I'm sorry, the H I B investigation has wrapped up before we consider what what would be the appropriate disciplinary consequence, you know, in in essence, we want to 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 Mr. Nash's point, employ progressive disciplinary consequences by looking at a number of factors, including previous infractions, the the context and surrounding circumstances, the severity of the con, the conduct is certainly something worthy of of taking note of and and acting upon. In short, the disciplinary outcome should be commensurate with the behavior and all of those previous infractions in terms of taking a progressive approach to this point.
On the board is not often well understood. And again, part of the reason I want to do this is to to try and provide a little more information, even in a broad sense, that when there is an incident or an allegation of an H I B specifically and where perhaps there the H I B itself is unfounded because of the failure of of one of the required elements, statutorily required elements. That doesn't mean that that the that the investigation necessarily found that there was no quote unquote bullying, because again, as as Mr. Nash helped us understand earlier, the common understanding of bullying is not necessarily the same as what is required to find an H I B in the state of New Jersey. And even though an H I B may be unfounded because of the failure of a particular required element, that doesn't mean that the school's not taking it seriously. Doesn't mean that the code of conduct would not come into play. So thank you for for that that explanation. So the next question, I'm going to give a heads up to Mrs. Wethington, because I think this is probably going to be right in your wheelhouse. Question involves evidence and videos and they, the question is, how can you say or find that there was no H I B when it is on video? Specifically, you know, what proof do you need? What sort of evidence is required in order to find an H I B?
So certainly there may be evidence that the incident occurred. It may be on video. A lot of times things happen in schools. We can see video of incidents that happen in the hallway, on the bus, but it still needs to meet the criteria. So perhaps there was no disruption. Perhaps there was no characteristic. And if that was the case, it would not meet the criteria for H I B. So the incident would have been addressed at the school level via code of conduct, but it still may not have met the criteria for H I B.
It's a great question. And it sort of goes to, you know, can we believe our eyes when we see something? The video evidence that we see is always relevant to an investigation, but it might not tell the full picture. The video might have captured one piece, for example, of an ongoing conflict that's happening between two particular students over an extended period of time. So it's always something that's looked at. It's always important evidence. But we want to keep in mind that there could be lots of other evidence involving those students and those potential issues as well. And this might be one piece of the puzzle that isn't always giving an accurate picture of what's really going on.
All right, next question. I've heard that bullying isn't really bullying unless it causes quote substantial disruption. And what does that mean? Now, Mr. Nash, I know that you've you've addressed this briefly in your comments. If you want to maybe provide a little bit more detail, a little more context on that element, that would be great.
It's a, it's a great question. It's one of the more complicated parts of New Jersey law. Sometimes you'll have an incident that occurs between two students and you might notice that two minutes later, those same students are laughing and playing and getting along really well. And that continues for a period of time. That's a potential indicator that the issue that might have been inappropriate may not have caused substantial disruption. So what you're looking for is a lasting change in baseline behavior for that child. And it can take a lot of different forms. Student is afraid to come to school. That's pretty clear as a lasting impact. The student's demeanor is changed in some dramatic way. The student who is very friendly and outgoing is shutting down. The student's routine is changed. The student is doing everything possible to avoid ever walking into that part of the school because of fear. So what we really have to look at are concrete changes from baseline behavior for that particular child in order to to show that there really is some substantial disruption. And it can be very subtle. It could be emotional harm that the student opens up to a counselor about. But it might not be something that you obviously see just by looking at that particular student. So it can come in a lot of different forms, but we need to show that lasting impact.
So we're going to open up now to questions for those of you who are here and those of you who are online. I would need someone else who has access to. And so Dr. Malash will will also let us know. We're going to alternate like we do at our action meetings. So anyone who is here in person who has a question, why don't you come on up? And if you're comfortable doing that, just so we have a microphone. And and if you wouldn't, thank you for for coming here and speaking, just if you would give us your name and municipality, not your, not your street address, just where you, you know, the name and municipality would be great.
Municipality?
Just the town. That's it. Yep, just the town.
My name is Eliana Cohen and I live in Cherry Hill. My question is, what does H I B do that isn't, that isn't provided by the code of conduct?
Who wants to address that one? Sure. Okay, sure.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that question because that is a good one. The difference would be for the student code of conduct would be the consequences. So more like the discipline part of it. On the hip side, we would do some form of possible counseling with the student or some type of remedial, something that's not hopefully to help them not repeat their behavior again. So it could be having even the parent in for a a conference and talking to them about their behavior and how we can help them outside of school also. So it's not just the on the other side would be something that we can do that's remedial or, you know, let no consequence base. So, you know, sometimes it could be even just the fact of having those contacts, like sometimes we do follow ups and checkups with the students regularly to make sure that their behavior is consistent with with not getting into some type of consequence. Does that make sense? Does that help? Thank you. Good.
Hi, Eliana. It's good to see you again. So in addition to what Ms. DiStefano is saying, I think the harassment, intimidation and bullying remaining in the student record is important for us as well. At the end of our sixth, seventh and eighth grade years, when we go into Genesis, our student management system, we start every year fresh in terms of discipline. So the consequences that are linked to the harassment, intimidation and bullying. But that H I B, as Mr. Nash said, when it gets to that third space, we as school administrators in the school district have to come up with a very more formalized intervention plan to be able to get at some of the root causes of why this harassment, intimidation and bullying keeps happening over and over again. So I think that's an important part of the harassment, intimidation and bullying staying in the student record pre K to 12 while the student remains with us. Because oftentimes those disciplinary consequences don't remain in the same way that that hit us. Thanks again for your question, Eliana.
Move to the line and I want to, we have one more. Sure.
I'm sorry. Thanks for the question. I just wanted to add one more thing to what Mrs. DiStefano and Mr. Guy had said. As a school, we have a school climate and safety committee. So when we are looking at H I B like more broadly, we do look for trends and we look for, you know, things that are going on inside the school so that we can improve the school climate. And I know at the elementary level, we're always looking, you know, do we need to have lessons on this? Do we need to speak to whatever, like the trends in bullying a little more to help the students who we serve make better choices, to help them understand, because a lot of times at the elementary level, they might not you know, understand fully that these things fall under bullying. So I think it helps us when we look at it as educators to look at those trends and to help make the school a safer place. And we do seek student student input as well. So thank you for your question. It's a really good question.
Great. And and great responses because that that helps us think better understand that there's a lot more that goes on with respect to the responses, whether it be an H I B or code of conduct that that we hope that you can be a little more familiar with. We'll move now online and the first name up is Carolina Bevitt. So if you please state your, again, your name and your municipality and your question.
Hi, Carolina Bevitt, Cherry Hill. My question is, could you please describe what some of the restorative justice practices are and explain how you're measuring if those practices are effective? Thanks.
So we're going to turn this one to Mr. Guy, if you could respond to that question.
Sure. So a number of the restorative, well, restoration just means to put in right relationship with. Oftentimes that isn't the alleged offender and the alleged victim. What we are trying to do is to try and restore some sort of connection. Sometimes that's done in isolation with our guidance counselors and our student assistance counselors. At the middle level, it could be our advisors that we are working with. Oftentimes it is a lot of reflection as we are working with the alleged offender, we could be working with their parent or guardians around other ways that they can, if they've done some harm to the alleged victim or multiple victims. We could be talking about how they can restore, not necessarily one to one repair, but other trust areas. So there's trust building and trust pieces that our guidance counselors do a great job with in terms of meeting with that alleged offender and making and trying to set forth some path of restoration around and and trust rebuilding. So oftentimes those things are not necessarily the things that you don't see in that we as school administrators can comment on. We are working with that child and we're working with that child's family. We're working with advisors, guidance counselors and student assistance counselors to try and work in some of those restorative pieces. And I think it, it, as Mr. Nash alluded to, it takes, it takes time. It takes patience because the whole goal of restoration doesn't extinguish the progressive work that Mr. Cohen talked about with the code of conduct. We apply the code of conduct and then the restoration takes place at that point. I think oftentimes people feel as if there is this rush to repair the harm without the application of the code of conduct. We're applying the code of conduct in a progressive way. But ultimately we want the behavior to stop and that's the bottom line. Our pre K to 12 children, as I've also heard Dr. Malash call them, are children. And they aren't bad children. They're children that are making decisions that we want to help them alter. So that's really the work around the restoration and a little bit about some examples without getting too deep.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Guy. Is anyone else in the panel want to add anything to that response?
And Mr. Mayor, it's Barbara Wilson. This is just a time reminder. We are now at 7:50 PM. We have about 40 minutes left of the session.
Thank you. Let's return to the rooms. Anyone else have any questions that you'd like anyone on the on the panel to respond to? Um, that you'd like anyone on the on the panel to respond to? Seeing none, let's go back. And Dave Kuzmanich, if you would, um, again, just repeat your name and municipality and um, what's your?
Yes, good evening, Dave Kuzmanich, Cherry Hill. Um, I've got multiple questions. Um, first, uh, one of the young ladies, a couple of uh board me- board minute meetings ago. Spoke about the number of H I B actuals versus how many. Parents think an H I B happened? I was wondering if you guys had any kind of statistics on? How many H I Bs were filed? Last year versus actual investigations being positive? That's question number one. Question number two about the restorative justice, when you talk about the trust. Who is trusting who is my question? Are you are you talking about the alleged offender to the alleged? Um, uh, the the alleged offender to the person that they supposedly hurt? You know, trust between those two? Is it trust between the school and the alleged offender? Is it, you know, what what are you talking about trust? And, you know, I understand things like that take time. I'm just trying to figure out. You know, what 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 kind of trust, you know, you guys are working towards? Um, and then my last question is, if I have any other questions, can I put my hand up again this evening? Thank you.
Okay, yes. And last question first, we we want, again, as as my initial comments, we want to listen. Respond to as many questions as we can. We want to take back as many questions that we can't answer tonight so that we can answer them in the future. So yes. Something else comes up. If you hear something in a response that. Um, causes you to to have another question, by all means. Um, you know, raise your hand again and we and you'll have not that opportunity. Why don't we, let's try and break your first two questions up. The first one with regard to statistics on H I Bs. Probably most appropriate again um for Mrs. Wellington to respond to that one. So I'm going to put you on the spot again and pass the mic.
So Mr. Kuzmanich, the power of having electronic systems, we just ran it really quickly. We had a hundred and sixty-four. H I Bs filed last academic year of that number eighty-seven were unfounded and seventy-seven were founded.
And for the second part of the question with regard to restorative practices. And trust will go back again to Mr. Guy.
Yeah, thank you. So the the que- the question was around trust and whether or not it's the alleged. Uh, offender, the alleged uh victim, it's the school. Um, it's all of the above. Uh, when uh harm is done and we're trying to repair relationships. There are a number of individuals that are involved. It could be directly between the offender and the victim. But it also could be that sphere of intimacy with common friends between them, feeling let down. It could be if a teacher is knowledgeable about that, who's an advisor at the middle level. And they work on our second step program and they talk about trust building and social emotional learning. They could feel, hey, we've been doing these lessons, trying to enact these things. And this was the type of behavior that we saw manifest. So that it that trust building could take place and take the form in a lot of different ways. It's a qualitative. Piece that is somewhat difficult to measure. Uh, that's why it takes as much time as it is, but to the caller's question. It could be all of those spaces and even more that we um have not recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Guy and Mrs. Wellington back um in the room. And I know you know the rules, but. We'll go over them again, name and municipality.
Alana Yaris, Cherry Hill. Um, you mentioned that um if a child or if a student has a HIB. Three times, uh, then there's like a second. Process of something that happens over the course of their time in the school. Um, I know that it was like three times in a year and then the law changed. Now it's three times over the course of your thirteen, fourteen years of schooling. What if there is a HIB in kindergarten or first grade and then there's nothing until tenth or eleventh grade? You're taking that HIB from kindergarten or first grade and counting that towards that three with this new law? That's like ten years of growth in a child. How do you compare the? Them all together to be able to say, oh, now we need to go to the second step because you've had three HIBs. Even though one or two of them were from like ten years ago.
So I'll come in generally on the law. It's a great question. Um. Remember what this triggers is a student intervention plan. It doesn't trigger a multiple day suspension. It doesn't trigger um any specific mandated discipline. Um, it triggers a more formal plan. The plan can take lots of different um, lots of different forms. Um, so if you have a student who didn't have an issue for ten years. And uh then has uh two issues. Um, my guess is that the district would be looking much more closely at the two issues that happened a year apart. Um, as opposed to the one that happened ten years earlier. Um, or if you've got three issues and they're each four or five years apart. Um, my guess is the district might uh put much more weight on the last incident that occurred. Um, because it might not be very useful to look at a trend when you have three incidents over that long. It might be that it's not the best law in the world. Um, the legislature doesn't always think through these things in the level of detail we would like. Uh, but the law itself requires that student intervention plan whenever you get to that third confirmed defense.
Sure.
I just want to interject because I know people are listening and some of the ling- language is like hard to understand and. We want to try to make it as easy as possible to also understand. In that new process of the three um incidents, it's founded H I Bs. So not just you have an H I B filed against you or something like that. It it had to be founded. So if something was found in in kindergarten and then two more founded again. Then then. That's the process, but obviously like Mr. Nash said, we would look at the older ones more um seriously, but. I feel like you have to just know that it was the founded ones, not just a filed one. I think that's important to to understand.
No one else online right now? Anyone else in the room with any questions? Come right on back up. And even though we did this before, again, your name and town where you live.
Hi, this is Eliana Cohen again. I live in Cherry Hill. I still live in Cherry Hill. Question regarding HIB, whether it's founded or unfounded, whether you're dealing with just the code of conduct or also what HIB provides. Is the situation being handled equally? Whether or not it is a HIB incident? For example, what is, would the um victim or the child being bullied receive the same level of support?
The thing I can say generally, again, uh invite others to comment. Whether something is hip or not, doesn't necessarily tell you. How serious the incident is, the level of harm that was caused. It tells you whether it met a very specific New Jersey definition. So um, you know, school officials will take very seriously issues that cause harm. Even if they don't meet New Jersey's technical definition of HIB, that's not the driving factor.
Sorry, the passing of the microphone is is tough. I'm sorry about that. We take all the situations very seriously, depending, you know, doesn't it doesn't delineate. Between if it's going to be HIB or not or code student code of conduct. Everything is taken seriously and really our number one priority is for the safety of. Students and for the school. So when we're looking at that, if it falls into a HIB and it falls into that report, then then that takes. That path, but no matter what, we're taking everything seriously and working with the victims. Whether it's an H I B victim or student code of conduct victim. Um, and then also the offenders. You know, working with them also. Does that help?
And Mrs. Eva, I bet she wants to.
Yeah, so um, I I just wanted to go back to like the restorative practice piece that we had talked a little bit about before, and I think. That's such an important component in what you're what you're asking, what you're talking about. Um, a lot of times when there's conflict or there's another type of um. Interaction where somebody feels like vulnerable and they need support. That when we do restorative practices either between two children or it could be among like a whole class of children if there's a concern. That we do take that seriously and, you know, a lot of times um in elementary school, we will do like proactive circles too. Um, we listen to the educational assistants. Sometimes they see something is happening on the playground, but nothing has been reported to us yet and. You know, we try to get ahead of it a little bit so it doesn't turn into something that could potentially be a a HIB issue. Or sometimes um we receive, you know, from parents will receive screenshots of like text messages that aren't HIB, but we do address that as well, even though. Um, you know, if it happened outside of school, it's not necessarily um. You know, since it doesn't fall under HIB, it's not generally addressed under a code of conduct. But we will um like the principal and the counselor do get involved in that because. We don't want things to escalate and we want to get in front of things and really try to help support the kids and just help um help you to make good choices.
And and I would just briefly add um that when we approach a concern of, you know, regarding student behavior and conduct. Exclusively through the Code of Conduct, what what oftentimes happens is we're ignoring the needs of the victim. Uh, th- those needs tend to be ignored when when you're looking solely at the conduct of the offender. Um, and therein lies that the power of restorative practices. Um, what the the research has shown is that focusing solely on punitive measures tends to thwart empathy. Whereas um requiring a an offender to look at the harm that they've caused and and have a voice in repairing that harm. It has to be a a process whereby. The offender's willing to participate. All parties have to be willing to participate in that process. Not and I should also add. Um, as it relates to HIB, best practices dictate that we tend not to try to bring the parties together through a restorative. Um, type of practice only in that um we're bullying is to is to be suspected or to be founded. You know, the the experts tell us that it's best to to employ so- some different approaches, counseling. Um, you know, be being the primary um approach for for the victim.
Oh, one follow up, that's okay.
Of course.
Um. I'm saying just for simplicity sake, assuming two situations. That are equal in. Um, their ramifications on all parties. Um, will one that falls under head and one that falls into code of conduct? Will they be addressed on the same timeline?
So there are, there are statutes around addressing the HIB. Um, that. Usually when that's reported to us, we have to call your parent or guardian within twenty-four hours. You and uh if you alleged victim or alleged uh offender. Um, but even if that is just conflict, we are still moving on that within twenty-four hours as well, and it's just as quickly. We don't have a necessary um um state law that's. A statute for us to move on that, but we want to make sure that. You feel safe and we want to do that as as quickly as possible. So we will put our teams together. To be able to support you within that conflict, especially if you're reporting that to us directly anonymously, stop it wherever else we may. Get that information. So we don't want you to think just because statute says that we have to do certain things within twenty-four hours, ten school days and other pieces. That conflict kind of gets moved to the back burner and we can wait two or three days for that. I wouldn't say any of our uh nineteen schools operate from that mindset. We want to be able to make sure. That whatever harm was that you are bringing to us, you felt an immediacy around that and we are compelled to bring you that same immediacy. For the types of interventions that we can put in play.
Thank you.
And just to reinforce that, um, as you know, we talked about earlier, oftentimes, even if there is a HIB investigation going on. The district might have figured out immediately on day one that there were other code of conduct violations and. When that is figured out. That's responded to immediately. Um, so oftentimes, even though the HIB process might take a little longer and be a little bit more formalized. It doesn't prevent school officials from immediately responding when there are other issues.
Great, great question, great follow-up question and sort of sum up some of those answers. The initials H I B aren't magic with regards to a school's. A responsibility in addressing the issues. Um, and those questions have helped us, I think, explain that a little bit. So thank you for coming out and thank you for those questions. We do have another question on the line. And that is Ms. Pendergast, if you would. State your name, municipality and um what is your question tonight?
Hello, uh Laura Pendergast, Cherry Hill. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Great. Um, so I am actually very supportive of the restorative justice framework. Uh, I'm really glad that Cherry Hill is using that approach. Um, but I will say that it's of the available. Student discipline, student conflict management approaches is one of the most time and resource intensive. Uh, ones available and it also requires. A lot of staff training and a lot of um staff and teacher buy-in. Uh, which can sometimes be really hard to get teachers to come around to, right? And so I'm wondering if the folks on the panels feel, because I I I believe and I could be wrong with my timeline, so tell me if I'm wrong. I think that the this approach was implemented not all that long before COVID. And then COVID happened. And some folks in some schools may not have had full time to implement, like enough time to really get it running before COVID. Um, I'm wondering if folks feel like. We have sufficient uh resources devoted to staff training and staff understanding and generating staff buy-in to really do this well. Um, or if if that is an area that we that could use um continual support, like that the board members might think about. Investing more resources in. Um, and I don't know the answer. It's a genuine question. Um, for those of you who do know. Um, that's all. Thanks so much.
I I think I've been nominated to to try to see if I can take a stab at this. Thank you for the question, very thoughtful question to to your point about time. Uh, there there's going to be a significant amount of time invested in in students who. For want of a better way to describe it, tend to be on the the office's radar a- as frequent flyers. Um, so. What restorative practices ultimately does, a- as I was alluding to earlier, is it? Again, you you want to to ensure that the kids are willingly participating in that process and I'll circle back. I know there's a question around training. Which I'll circle back to, but the piece, um, it it tends to be harder work on the students emotionally from the standpoint that. Um, often when given the choice, um, and I'll use detention as an example, um, if a child would prefer to serve at detention. Or would rather have a restorative conference face the victim whom they've harmed in some manner and and have a voice. In terms of coming up with a solution. To repair that harm. I I think many kids, if they're being honest, would tell you it's just easier to serve the detention. Um, but that doesn't serve the victim and that doesn't serve the offender and and what what um the research has told us and and. Th- this has also been our experience uh in in my building. Is that when kids are involved in this process, since it's a thoughtful process, you tend to see. Forgive me for using the legal term, less recidivism, where where kids are reoffending. Um, in terms of training, you you're correct. Just prior to COVID, we did have some formal training. Um, the the staff, um, at least my staff, um, it it was a. Group a grassroots type of initiative where it was something of a bottom up type of. grassroots type of initiative where it was something of a bottom up type of initiative. And so from that standpoint, there there has been buy in. We did have to circle back and do something of a reboot following COVID. And right now, we're to be candid, we we are using a hybrid approach, depending upon the circumstances, the you know, the nature of the infraction and the willingness of those involved. Anything to add, Mrs. Legamba?
Yeah. I think, yeah, also, we're at the same school, for those of you who don't know. But I I think it's really, once the kids learn how like restorative circles work, or if they come down to the office to see one of us, they really learn how to reflect on their behavior and, you know, just in that reflection, as John was sharing, they they grow and they make better choices moving forward. So while it does, it may be time intensive, I think that the, you know, that we do see the benefits of it over time. So, you know, the time that you're spending in the beginning really does pay off in the end because children are making better choices. They're having these good conversations with each other. They can do that on the playground. A lot of times when they come into my office, like if they're playground concerns, they know what to do. They know what the affective questions are. We sit down, we have a conversation and, you know, it's meaningful. So I do feel that even though it takes a little bit more time in the beginning, it really does pay off.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, it's Barbara Wilson. I apologize for the interruption. I'm just keeping time as I do. We're at eight 12, the meeting is scheduled to end at eight 30. We probably will take the last question at about eight 20.
Don't don't apologize. I wish I could pipe those helpful reminders into my household because I personally could use that kind of assistance or certain tasks that are given to me. We do have, so we have time for a couple more questions. So let's try and get as many of those in as we can. Online next, Mr. Kuzmanich. Again, if you just repeat your name and municipality.
Yep. Thank you for taking my call again, Dave Kuzmanich, Cherry Hill. I just, it it dawned on me this this town hall that you guys spoke about a month ago, and then we got the the information online about it. I don't know how many of you have children in the system, you know, school age children in the system right now, and don't know how many of you have personally have gone through an HIV investigation. And I know you want us to understand your end of it and the policies and the state laws. Let me just give you a little bit from the parent's side, since you guys all know what I just, we just went through. Once you get that email from the school saying that the HIV has started and that there will be no further communication while the investigation is going on. Okay. Radio silent from the school, even if you call, they will not talk to you about it whatsoever. And then you get a letter in the mail stating that nothing was found. And then you call the school to discuss that letter, and then they didn't want to talk about it. So from a parent's standpoint, once the investigation is started, like I said, radio silent, you get a letter stating that nothing found. And in your mind, as a parent, you're thinking that no one is caring of what happened to my son. Because as the parent of the offended child, we don't know what you did to the alleged offender or anything at all, or said anything to their parents. So on our end, as the offended child, we know absolutely nothing. And it just adds to the level of frustration that just builds and builds and builds. And, you know, you keep hearing, you know, stuff going on in the hallways, stuff going on on the bus, retaliation on top of retaliation. So I just wanted to give you a heads up of what the parents on this side go through by the laws that the state has put in place that you guys have to follow with pretty much telling us absolutely nothing. So thank you.
Okay. And and thank you for the question. As I said earlier, we're here to listen and to be partners. This is the type of question that, you know, we actually look forward to responding to because it's important. And I think our president, Mrs. Stern, would like to take the the first shot at the mic here.
So I will share my personal experience because I have quite a bit of it, unfortunately. I have three children in the territory, two who are still in the district and one who has graduated. And I have been through the HIV process twice. I went through it once in elementary school with one of my kids who had an HIV filed against him, and he subsequently filed one against the person who accused him. And it was absolutely conflict. It was definitely not bullying. And it was very uncomfortable and difficult as an elementary school parent to go through that process, but, excuse me, but it was done well and the outcome was, I thought, very properly handled. I had a much more challenging situation with my son who was in high school, my son who has special needs. And Mrs. Di Stefano, that was, I think, the first time we met. And it was a significant experience. There were three offenders. My son was the victim. This is actually the first time one was ever filed against him. That same child actually went through I would say a border experience when he was at Rosa. And, you know, border, and he was definitely in the kind of non statutory way he was bullied. But in the statutory way, he was bullied in high school. And it was a very disruptive experience for my family, more importantly, for my son. I I think people who know me here, who had never met me in this school, they experienced an hour of nonstop crying because that's what I did in the office. When it happened, it was so significant. And it caused a very substantial disruption in the school that day and into the next day. And I was very concerned about my son being in school for several days. But the school thought we followed the process, we trusted the process, the process worked. I never got information about how, whether or not code of conduct was applied. I heard rumors that it was to the offenders. Initially, my son was disciplined because of a lack of knowledge until the school started the investigation and understood and uncovered what really happened. It was a very, very painful time. He was a freshman. We were new to the school. And and subsequently, one of the offenders' families appealed the HIV. So I went through the appeal process and I sat in front of the board and had to, as a parent, ask, bring evidence, well, I chose to bring evidence of what happened to make sure they understood in detail what went on. And they upheld the decision. And interestingly enough, speaking of restorative practices, even though that was the end of that, and my son was sat in front of one of the offenders the following year in a class. So this happened at the end of the school year and in the fall, he had a class with one of the offenders. He sat right in front of that offender. Over time, that offender approached him one day and let him know how disturbing their, that person's, that student's own behavior, that offender's behavior, how disturbed they were with their own behavior, looking back on it. They grew from that experience. And at that point, my son was able to say, you know what, it's past, it's water under the bridge. Don't worry about it. Don't carry this around. Because of the good work done here, I had and my son had a very restorative, ultimately, a just experience where people stood up for him and and things were handled properly. It was very hard being on the other side of not knowing exactly, you know, the the details, that was difficult. But most importantly, you know, you know, we we understood they were, they were kids who did something. There were a few kids who did something wrong and they made a mistake. And my son didn't respond well either in the moment, you know, and and ultimately, I think they all learned from it. So it was a difficult experience for sure, but you know, I I was, I think, you know, because I went through an experience like that, you know, I very much appreciate the professionalism of all of the staff here in our schools because I know how hard they work and how hard they work that day. And I can tell you that Mrs. Mrs. Di Stefano, I mean, you had your finger on the pulse of exactly that very significant substantial disruption that was bubbling up in the school that day. And the school, you took great steps, all of you, to, you know, respond to my concerns as a parent. And, you know, and I think there was a lot of effort to ensure that, you know, that that things were done right. So that's a unsurprisingly long winded explanation. People who know me know I tend to get long winded. But, you know, I I did want to share my personal experience with that, and I hope that it's helpful. I'm not sure, Mrs. Kuzmanich, whether or not that's helpful to to your question, but I did want to make sure I shared that experience.
All right. Thank you. And we will go back to the line. I'm not actually, we're going to go online in the room.
And Mr. Mayor, I will just chime in to say that we are at eight 22. So I would say we have time for one more question, possibly two.
Let's see how this goes. You would, again, another who know, you know, the rules, but so I won't ask what the rules are, you will.
Yoni Yarres Cherry Hill, one, thank you to Ms. Stern for that. That is not easy to be vulnerable, especially in the role as that. So thank you. Onto the question. We've talked a lot about student versus student for this, but there's also the adult versus student portion of that. And how does that go about, especially as we're transitioning to a stage of my generation coming up into the teaching field, who has been more culturally sensitive, more aware of things, less more implicit bias and bias is part of our vocabulary. It's how we were raised. But the generation who taught me and who's currently on the track out in the next five, 10 years, hopefully some longer, because we don't have enough teachers coming up. How is that work for when a student has a teacher who has made a hip against them? And also simultaneously, we have a lot of consultants that work within the district, being substitute teachers. We have bus drivers who are not district employees. And how are those handled when hip situations occur? And lastly, I got to know Mrs. Stefano as a student when she had the district role. And listening to this makes me think that if you're really nice to have her back in that district role as the lead Student Assistance Council district wide, I think it'd make a really big difference in how things are done. I will tell you this, Diane was amazing for me as a student, and it's been nice getting to reconnect as a parent in the district. And I think there's a big difference where there's not somebody in the central office providing the level of support for school climate that a district sacked it. Thank you. I'll sit down.
So it's a very important question. Obviously, any bullying issue is very serious, but if a trusted adult is the one who is engaging in harassment, intimidation, or bullying, that can be devastating. So New Jersey law defines bullying as having a student victim, but certainly the aggressor could be a staff member in that school. If you have that situation, the person doing the investigation cannot be in the same bargaining unit. And that's in order to make sure there's trust with the process. So in a case like that, an administrator would typically do that investigation. And it would follow the same process and there would potentially be discipline for that adult just like there would be for any student. And of course, that adult also has due process rights to challenge any conclusion, just like a student would. But it can be devastating if you have a trusted staff member or bus driver or other adult who's engaging in that behavior.
Just to talk about the substitute teachers that come into the district, I do the training with them. So we hold like a certain training a couple of times over the year where myself and Mr. Sepredo go in and he talks about the safety and security of the buildings. And then I discuss about HIV and what their role is as a as a mandated reporter at that time as being the substitute in that in that classroom or in that school. So they are trained by me. You know, a couple of times a year, probably three to four, depending on how many substitutes are there. So the substitution is trained. As for the bus drivers, I'm pretty sure, Ms. Weddington, that the bus drivers do give us a lot of information. They do come in and report also. And they have also an opportunity to be trained within their own company. So does that answer that a little bit? Hope. But thank you for your kind words, too.
Being being mindful of the time and not not wanting to encourage Mrs. Wilson to do something more drastic than than her polite time check ins. We, there is, there are, there is another hand online, what I would, I would ask you to do, I would encourage you to please put your question in email, send that to Dr. Malash. And that will be responded to. And just very quickly, on behalf of those members of the Board of Education who are present here today, President Stern, Mr. Greenberg, and Mrs. Plecher, and those members of the board who are who are not here. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for participating. Thank you all online for checking in with with your questions. And those of you online who also were listening. And again, that's why we wanted to be here to listen and as Mrs. Stern's, you know, final response should, you know, should teach all of us something. We we on the board, all of us on this panel, we are also people with emotions. We are humans. We we do suffer the same things that parents do. Some of us have been in that situation. We understand the emotions. We understand the frustration. But and that that is one of the reasons why we want to hold this town hall. Because as I've said earlier, we want to find ways to potentially improve some of the processes and communications and move forward as partners with the community. This is a particularly challenging area, as Mr. Nash has has explained, not just for us here in Cherry Hill, but everywhere in in the state and throughout the country. That doesn't mean it is not an area that we want, don't believe can be improved. So we value your input and thank you for doing that. So on behalf of the board, thank you for coming. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Malash for his final remarks. And we look forward to holding more town halls and other subjects in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I echo your your thanks to the board members that are here, to Mr. Guy, Mr. Cohen, to Ms. Legamba, to Mr. Stefano, and to Mrs. Weddington for sitting on the panel and participating and responding to the questions. Mrs. Wilson, as always, thank you for your your help in setting all this up for advertising it and for certainly being the timekeeper. And again, a very special thanks to Mr. Plavinsky, Mr. Holman, for all the work that they do with technology to get all this set up. They are always here, no matter what meetings or town halls or things that we are doing. They're here. They're the ones, regardless of anything else that's going on, they're here at night, putting it all together. So a special thank you to the technologists. Appreciate everybody being here. If you have any other follow up questions, send them via email. Have a good evening.